Welcome to the Town Council Meeting of Southwest Ranches this evening. It's great to see you, a nice full house again. Appreciate everybody being here. If we can please call the roll.
Certainly, Mayor. Mayor Brightcrus.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kozinski.
Here.
Councilmember Albritton.
Present.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. If you please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So, we have a very special proclamation. This is a very special day. And we have a very special proclamation to present this evening. Russell, I believe you're going to read this for us.
Yep, I'll take a stab at it, Mayor.
Excellent, excellent.
All right, so this is a proclamation honoring George Morris. So whereas George Morris is the owner of PHI Construction, which should really be called P.I.T.A. Construction, and we all know why. And whereas while George contends that his company name stands for pride, honesty, and integrity, we've discovered that it really stands for profit motivated, harassing town officials, and incessant complaining. And whereas while George fashions himself as a straight shooter, we all know him to be well-rounded, since there isn't a corner he won't cut. And whereas George has been instrumental in numerous construction projects that have benefited the town, including the Sunshine Ranches Equestrian Park, the Rolling Oaks Barn, and both versions of Town Hall. And whereas while he was the lowest bidder on many of these projects, he was selected because of his well-earned reputation in the construction industry. And let's just say that you get what you pay for. And whereas George has volunteered his time in service to the town as a member of the Comprehensive Plan and Drainage and Infrastructure Advisory Boards, the Southwest Ranches Parks Foundation, and uninvited advisor to the town administrator. And whereas he has also demonstrated a keen artistic eye, as documented by the dynamic color palette of plaid shirts that were clearly patterned after the '70s show. So thank you for wearing the plaid shirt today, by the way. And whereas while George has decided to step away from service on town advisory boards to focus on family, and namely focusing on being a devoted grandfather to his grandson Oliver, he's relishing the opportunity to finally speak to someone who won't be able to run away. And whereas in deciding to recognize George for his many contributions to the town, the best way to recognize him was debated. Should the recognition be a picture on a dunk tank at the country fair? A proclamation? Or a ceremonial key to the town? The latter was not chosen because George would just have probably made copies anyway. Instead, the town decided to issue a proclamation designating February 29th as George Morris Day. The date is significant-
Wait a minute, Russell, that was supposed to be George Morris 15 minutes occurring at midnight.
The date is significant since it will fall on leap year this year and won't need to be celebrated for another four years. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and town council hereby designate February 29th, 2024, as George Morris Day. In celebration of this day, all donkeys will be issued plaid shirts in your honor. George, we love you and we really do admire all you have done for this town. We just needed to have a little fun at your expense. And now we will read the real proclamation in your honor. Working on my next career. All right, so this is the real proclamation for George Morris Day. Whereas George Morris, owner of PHI Construction in Southwest Ranches, is much more than a resident, local business owner, or town advisory board member. And whereas as a businessman first and foremost, his service to this community for over 25 years cannot be reduced to simple professional dealings due to the many ways his involvement has positively impacted residents, staff, council, and visitors. And whereas George was instrumental in construction projects in several town parks, including Sunshine Ranches Equestrian Park, Rolling Oaks Barn, and helping to establish the town's headquarters by improvement of both the initial Town Hall located on Dykes Road as well as the current location. And whereas he has also been generous in the donation of his time, as is demonstrated by his service, experience, and leadership on the Comprehensive Plan and Drainage Board and the Infrastructure Advisory Board, as well as the Southwest Ranches Parks Foundation. And whereas he's also demonstrated a keen eye for detail by bringing the artistic vision of the rural identification standards to life with expert execution in creating the beautiful, enduring rural program identification signage throughout the town, as well as the creation and construction of one-of-a-kind town monuments at Country Estates Park, Town Hall, and Founder's Trailside Park. And whereas George continues to put the needs of the town first, as demonstrated by his vision to develop the annual Southwest Ranches Country Fair, which has become a prominent annual fundraising event for the Southwest Ranches Parks Foundation. And whereas the town recognizes the many contributions benefiting residents and the town in general that George has made. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida does hereby recognize the significance of the many contributions selflessly made by George and extend our deepest thanks to him and designate February 29th as George Morris Day in the Town of Southwest Ranches. Congratulations. You're all gonna get it from me. I can't thank you guys enough. I still think you guys made a mistake nonetheless, but I'd like to extend my deepest gratitude to you guys, and it's been a pleasure being out here, living in the ranches for the last 20, 30 years. Actually, it's actually been 30 years. I don't want to go into a long speech or anything like that, but I came out here a long time ago for the open space, and it still is, and you guys have done a great job keeping it that way, and I look forward to living here for many more years, and I don't plan on going anywhere. As Russell mentioned, I'm gonna step back from my grandson. I've been spending a lot of time with him, and I'm gonna step away from the boards, etc. I'm not gonna disappear from the town. I'm gonna keep coming to the meetings. I'd like to thank my family for coming out tonight, being a great supporter of me. Also, my wife volunteering, she volunteers as well at the carnival. My daughter's volunteered here at Town Hall. My son's volunteered as well. I believe in volunteering. I've been here from the beginning. Maybe a lot of people don't know, I was Volunteer of the Year in 2000. That was an award that was given to me by Mecca, Mayor Mecca. And it was for contributing, answering a newsletter. It was an article in a newsletter that was sent out, that they were looking for volunteers to help build the first Town Hall. And it was something that I wanted to do, and I came out, and I worked with a lot of people here that had been here for the entire time. I helped assemble the trailers, volunteered, brought in my guys. Wasn't paid, it was all strictly volunteer, something that I wanted to do. And even afterwards, when the trailers were assembled, I built the front town decoration to try and look like a Western-style entrance versus nasty trailers that were given to us by the volunteer fire department, I believe. We've come a long way. We acquired this property here, also helped out here with my license, etc. Done a lot of work at the parks, gone above and beyond in trees and doing any fences. I've done so many things, and it's been a pure pleasure. I've learned from a lot of former residents in this town, going back to Bob Dunn. I remember he was busting my chops outside Town Hall, the first Town Hall. And Eileen Dunn, we got New Holly's Worth, my inspiration, he also busted my chops too. When I was here, 30 years ago, I had a lot more hair, a lot less gray hair. I used to sit in the back of the room with Gary, at the back of the room in the South Broward Drainage District there, when we would have our meetings there. And going back even further to McCarthy High, that's where I met the mayor for the first time. He showed up, and famous story about me stepping in front of him saying, "Who's this guy? Move out of the way." I wanted to make my speech, first time that I met him. It's been a great pleasure of mine, as I stated, and a long history, and I've enjoyed working with many people that are up here as council. And there's other people that have been just as deserving, etc. But again, I appreciate you guys risking your careers for me and naming this day after me. I really do appreciate it. Again, I look forward to serving the town, and thank you everyone for that honor. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. And one last thing. Since, see, you guys are full of jokes too, huh? I've got something. I thought about this long and hard. So, I look around this dais here, this beautiful room, where I actually painted those walls, didn't I? And I see these pictures hanging up here. I think it's only deserving, if you guys are going to actually name a day after me, that I have my picture up there. So I brought my own picture. I had my photograph taken and figured out, hey, what the heck? I'm not actually wearing a plaid shirt, but if you want, I can have the picture redone. Let me show you the picture. I actually had it done at the fair. Check out the picture. So this is gonna go up on the wall. Everybody can look here. Everybody can see in the audience real quick. This is my portrait here. I deserve to be up on the wall. I've got my day. At least we can hang the photograph up one day of the week, right? Right, Russell? Okay, so I trust anybody to do it for me, so I actually brought a pic. Give me one second, I'll be right back. Am I deserving it? I think it's appropriate. Again, thank you very much, guys, for the honor. Appreciate it. Look forward to continue all the volunteering, etc. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. Let's get a couple pictures.
Sure.
Get some pictures while we're here. All right, great, thank you. Next item is public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a couple. The first one up is SYA regarding the 5K.
Hello to all Town Council members and residents. As we continue our preparations for this year's sixth annual Union Diversity 5K/Run/Walk, we would like to remind the council and town residents to sign up and donate for the race. With your amazing support in the previous years, we were able to raise more than $50,000 for the town's college scholarship fund. We appreciate your guidance and are looking forward to this year's race.
We have a fundraiser at Crumble on February 29th, which is Leap Day, in which 10% of your bill will be donated towards this year's 5K. We will have another fundraiser with Texas Roadhouse on the same day at the Miramar location, in which 10% of your bill will also go towards the 5K. Make sure to mention SYA at checkout in order to donate to the cause. We urge everyone to go out and support our cause. We hope to see everyone at this year's 5K. Thank you.
I just wanted to say a couple of words real quick about our sixth annual 5K. Our 5K, I can't believe we've been doing this for six years now. As we approach the date, it's March 9th, right? In addition to having as many people from the town and neighboring towns come out to support this amazing thing that we're doing to raise money for Southwest Ranches Scholarship Fund, what we're hoping that we can get this year is as many local businesses as possible to come out and to reach out to the SEEK Youth Society, to become sponsors, and to attend the event, because we have over 1,000 people show up at this event, and we want to use it not just to increase the scholarships that we're able to give out to the kids, but to be able to help local businesses and to enhance the reach of the local businesses within and around Southwest Ranches. So, thank you to everybody in the town, and thank you to the leadership for allowing us the opportunity to do this.
Thank you all. We'll go to that. If you have not yet signed up, we definitely encourage you to sign up for that. It's a great-
And we need to mention that it's on the 29th, which is George Morris Day. And he's gonna be at both locations, and he's paying for everything.
Speaking about George, I personally think it should be on the 30th. Anyway. And I spoke to him earlier, and I thought that since you were giving him an award, that it was going to be for the person that has shown up in front of the magistrate the most. So anyway. But the other thing, the real reason I'm up here, is that last month, I read to you my orphan list, which I read every year to the council, and this year, we've got some traction on it. The mayor has taken a look at it, and he made some phone calls through the town. And the missing blinking light at the trail entrance on Griffin Road at 193rd Lane is going to be installed, which is a very safety-conscious, major thing. And also, Weston Road and Bonaventure Boulevard bridges over the C-11 canal have pedestrian lights. And he's going to have, they worked with Broward County, and Broward County is going to install the high button for the equestrian community to go across. These are two that are going to be coming off this list in the next few months, hopefully. There are some others that I hope will come off also, but we'll work on those one at a time. But I want to thank the mayor very much for becoming involved and getting these two taken care of. Thank you.
Kathy Cox.
Good evening, Kathy Cox, 4940 Thoroughbred Lane in Sunshine Ranches. This is my prop. This is Clusia. I'm sure all of you are aware of Clusia. It is ubiquitous in Sunshine Ranches and most other places now. And I think in about 10 years, Sunshine Ranches will be one long Clusia hedge along the street. You won't be able to see anybody's house anymore. Unfortunately, Clusia is poisonous to horses, cats, and dogs. And I'm not a real proactive code enforcement person, but it's just that this plant is so prevalent that it's become a kind of a hazard. My neighbor behind me knocked down the ranch house when they moved here from Weston and planted this on my pasture line, and when they did it, I didn't know that it was poisonous to horses. They planted the hedge right on their six-foot chain link fence, and it has grown about 15 feet high, has grown through their fence and my fence. And one of my horses one night decided he was going to eat this, and became coy-doe. So I guess my point is, or what I would like to see, is for the town to educate the public that this is a poisonous plant, and that if you're gonna plant it, plant it so you can maintain it from your side of the property. Because I don't have a lot of choices here. I can let my horses get sick, or I can chop on my neighbor's hedge. So, that was my thing for tonight. I appreciate all that you try to do for us in maintaining our country lifestyle. It is an uphill battle.
Thank you, Kathy. John Garotti.
I'm gonna leave the mic here, Gary. Good evening, folks. John Garotti, 162nd Avenue. Like to thank you guys for putting up with my shenanigans every once in a while, but I gotta grab the mic, I'm sorry. Thanks to George, George from PHI, where are you? There you go. That PHI, that is real. I've seen him fix neighbor disputes. You can't fix everything, but he tries. He does a lot more than just do bobcat work and contract. He's a person you can talk to, especially information on the town and what to do and what not to do. He himself has warned me, "Hey, man, can't do this, can't do that." And that's appreciated, because when you don't know, and you get accurate information, that's how problems get solved. The SEEK Youth Association, if I'm saying that correctly, hats off to them. They've grown tremendously. They're my neighbors, I'm right down the street from them. It's amazing to see the diversity that we have here, and I will bring my big self to run in that race, or walk in the race, or whatever it is. I will sign up on the website, pretty much. You know, I announced my candidacy in the last Town Hall meeting. A lot of folks don't know me. Hi, wife, she watches me on YouTube. A lot of my friends do as well. Some of them laugh, they make fun of me. But I do have a lot of support. Go with Garotti 2024, you won't go wrong. At least that's what I tell myself. But anyway, what we gotta do is have inclusion in this town. Not argue, not fight. We have a topic we'll talk about in code violations, but that's coming soon. For now, how long, I have another minute? I got time, look at that. Couple concerns I have. I happen to be involved in my community a little bit more than I was a long time ago. I've been here 22 years. Every once in a while, I'll look up the town and I'll see, you know, I thought I was the only one that got in trouble. Something concerns me tremendously, and luckily, it's not my case, but there's several of these lawsuits that, you know, when you look at public record, and I'm not gonna mention anything specific, but we all know what we're talking about. There's a case that has dragged on and on and on, just a few of those, but 11 attorneys on one case, sounds like a lot of money. I think a lot of residents and a lot of people that don't even live here, and they hear stories, not for myself, I'm just a peon, my case was 24 grand. But there's some folks that have faced foreclosures, faced losses of business, licensed, you name it, they've had it. So, I'd like to see some sort of clarity on where do we draw the line when a lawsuit is either A, unwinnable, B, doesn't make any sense for the town and hurting a resident? A lot of people ask me that. I'm not an attorney, I don't sit back there. I hope I will, soon, but I get asked that a lot, and I want to know myself. Where do we draw the line? Look what happened to Joe Carroyo. City of Miami's coming next. I don't want my town to be on the news with $100 million lawsuit when it could be prevented or more. But I'm running out of time. We'll discuss the code stuff when I get to it. Thank you, guys.
Jim Lasky.
Jim Lasky, 5780 Southwest 188th Avenue. What I would like to mention tonight was the way the executive board of this garbage authority is shifting in favor of us. We're bringing up some positive ways to handle garbage through robotics and artificial intelligence. And if you saw the stock market today, it reflected it by a couple of hundred million dollars on one stock alone. That's nothing to sneeze about. They've got so many applications that are being, have been developed, are getting as many as their fourth generation of upgrades, because this process gets better and better. So you have to upgrade the software as you go. But as I was leaving the other day after the meeting, Mike Ryan, Mike Ryan from Coral Springs.
Sunrise.
He wants more information. He's a sharp guy, if you look at his resume, that guy is pretty well-educated. And for him to pick up on something like that, and the rest of the group follows suit, you've done a great job, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
You really have. I mean, I see it going. It's like you've all been buddies for years. It's amazing. All right, good luck.
Thank you, Jim. Hisham Mohammed.
Hello, respected mayor, council members, and residents of Southwest Ranches. My name is Hisham Mohammed, from Southwest Fifth Court. I'm here today to want to comment with regards to the support for Israel resolution that was passed. Now, we're coming towards, what, five months now since the beginning of this conflict? And in reality, right now, there is a humanitarian crisis that currently exists in the Gaza Strip. As of now, there are about 30,000 people that have been killed, half of whom have been children. And want to state this fact, that half of the population of the Gaza Strip are under the age of 18. So I think this is a very important thing to realize, that half of the 30,000 are actually children. And about 70,000 are injured. Last I checked, data sources point that there have been about 1,000 WCNSFs. Have we heard of that acronym before? No, because it's new. What does it stand for? Wounded Child No Surviving Family. And now, currently, there are approximately 1.4 million people that are packed in the last town of the Gaza Strip, Rafa. And furthermore to this humanitarian crisis is that food, water, and medicine are not getting in. And now, currently, the Israeli regime, led by Netanyahu, is looking to assault this last town. This can only be possible due to our president providing military aid, how so? By bypassing Congress. So what does this have to do with us? Well, the fact of the matter is, is that in order to fund this, it's coming from our taxpayer dollars. So, what I propose is that we reconsider this support for Israel and replace it with a ceasefire now. Why? So that we are not held morally complicit to the catastrophe, or as per the ICJ ruling, a plausible genocide. Thank you.
Mary Mitchell.
I have talks as well, but they're going to display so that visuals can be seen of the actual slaughter that is going on. I believe he said it best, and I think he said it well, but I wanted to address some of the statements that were made at last week's meeting by one of the citizens. It is hard to address the enormity of the falsehoods due to the time restrictions. However, firstly, I would like to point out, and this might come as a surprise to some, that there were already indigenous people on the land, Christians, Muslims, and Jews, living in peace and prosperity prior to the rise of Zionism and the immigration of European Zionists. As I have previously stated, Zionism is a nationalistic political movement, and anti-Zionism is in no way antisemitism. But make no mistake, white Zionism, which took hold in Europe at the beginning of the 20th century, is a resoundingly Zionist and antisemitic belief system. Support for a Jewish state grew in Europe after the events of World War II. The founder of Zionism, Theodore Herzl, appealed to antisemitite rulers, promising European leaders that Zionism will resolve the Jewish question by the establishment of a Jewish state. Hence, white Christian Zionists supported the creation of the State of Israel in 1948, the creation of which displaced over 170,000 Palestinians and was riddled with massacres. I will caution you again, anti-Zionism is not in any way antisemitism, but antisemitism is alive and well in white Christian Zionism. It might seem like a dichotomy, but they go hand in hand. I have listened in horror as members of our own community have taken a pro-Israel stance while also explaining to me that there are good Jews and bad Jews. These friends and neighbors have specifically called rabbinical Jews and anyone of Ashkenazi descent the sole perpetrators. descent the sole perpetrators of evil in the world. They have even mentioned ritualistic practices of drinking the blood of infants. Stop this madness now, as it will only continue to spread and give rise to more and more threats, not just to Islamic population, but those of the Jewish faith as well. This racism is thinly veiled, and there has already been a rise in Jewish hate crimes along with increase in Islamophobia. Please know these threats are not coming from those who stand with Palestine, but from right-wing Christian fundamentalists and conspiracy theorists who believe that on one hand, God promised Israel to the Jews, but on the other, that it was so that God could call all non-Christians in one place to annihilate them, Muslim and Jew. Be careful of your bedfellows, as they may not be your friends. Recognize that all people have a right to live in freedom and at the very least, to exist and live in peace. I again call for a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Alexis Dagger. I'm representing 5950 Southwest 172nd Ave, as well as 16890 Southwest 59th Court. I'm actually bringing up the MIW agreement that's being imposed on the people on this strip, what was once the existing airstrip that the town had. So recently, Sterling Road has been being improved, and in the improvement, there wasn't a single permit pulled, and it got to the point where it was about to be paved, and at this point, it was then stopped. All my existing neighbors have had to sign this form, at least the ones to the west of me towards 172nd Avenue, giving up a good chunk of their property. And in signing this form to improve my property that is being imposed on me to do, I would be giving up roughly 16% of my property with no financial gain nor benefit for this road being put in. This form actually represents and talks about how the land and tract that butts up to the real estate of the town of Southwest Ranches would in turn during the reading of this contract be known as the town tract, which would include the 50 feet of the property of each owner. The two owners behind me have actually given up an easement rather than just a right-of-way. This is asking for a right-of-way and telling me I cannot put a fence in unless I sign it. So I have three kids. When I started here, I backed up to woods. I had no neighbors to my left or right for five acres each way. Now I have Magnolia Estates that has a road that splits down the middle that services the 20 acres in properties. The property behind my father's house is one of the last strips of land that we have over there, that if there wasn't another Magnolia Estates developed, Sterling Road would not benefit this in any way, shape, or form. And to ask for 50 feet is saying that you're going to be giving up a four-lane road. This would benefit nobody. My aunt lives on 63rd Manor. She's the reason there's speed bumps on that road. Everybody speeds down these roads. We all know this. Sterling Road wouldn't benefit anybody that is existing and currently in place. I think that this should be looked into. I do understand that this form does have its reason when you're going to be improving the land or putting in a road that's going to benefit somebody, but this would not benefit anybody. So I'd like it to be considered that this isn't something that the town imposes on people that have no actual plan to install Sterling Road. And actually, I would assume that we would all oppose Sterling Road continuing, but it clearly has gotten to the point where they've taken out the tree line, and it's pretty much there. It's brought in a lot of nuisance. I've already seen cars tried to be stolen on the road. There's a lot of just sitting around and doing nothing at a time. But essentially, I would like it to be considered that this doesn't progress, and this would be reevaluated to not be imposed on the people trying to improve their property.
Perfect. Thank you. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you, George.
Mayor, last speaker is Debbie Green.
Debbie Green, 5201 Southwest 199. I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention, I just know several of my neighbors or just my neighbors that live in my community, whether it's Southwest Ranches, Pembroke Pines, and our walk around our big block. There's been a huge uptick in dogs, that, young dogs, not even old dogs, that are, they're dying because they're of cancer. And it seems to be a lot of it, the thought is that, no, I can't think of the name.
Roundup?
Roundup, thank you. That the Roundup has the chemicals in it that are dangerous to the dogs and animals. And so some of these lawn companies are coming out and they're using the Roundup, or property owners are using Roundup. Maybe they're not aware. But I can tell you, just in going around my block from 199 around, there's, I think, four people who have recently lost their dogs. And I know one of the council member lost his dog. So I would just ask everybody just to maybe get educated, find out more information on this weed killer, and maybe there are some other options out there. But I told my neighbor I would get up at the meeting, and thank you for reminding me. I needed to get up and talk.
Yeah. Thanks, Debbie. No more. Just a couple of comments before we go into the board reports. I do want to, for the folks that have been coming up the last few meetings, talking about Palestine, I'd like to set up a time where we can sit down and we can talk. Let's see what we can do. This obviously is a much bigger issue than Southwest Ranches, but you know, let's see what we can do. So I'm going to ask Russell if you can set something up, if you can please, Russell probably already has from the sign-up cards your information, but if not, please verify that, so we can have a conversation on that. Let's see what we can do. And then the other thing was, thank you so much for coming up, talking about Sterling Road. That was on my list. I will be touching on that when I get to my council member comments. Came up through a code issue that we got not too long ago, and I all of a sudden realized what was going on out there, and I cannot agree with you more. So we'll talk about that in a little bit as well. But thank you all. You know, I really, overall, I just want to say, you know, sometimes, you know, public comment isn't always the most comfortable part of our meeting, right? Because a lot of times, people have issues and questions and things, but that's why we get together, and that's why we have the conversations, and that's what it's all about. So thank you all for doing that, and let's try and move forward. So thank you. All right, board reports. Excuse me, do you have any board reports this evening? George, you want to give an emeritus board report? Go ahead, go for it, George. Give us something. All right. Thank you. Any other board reports?
So on behalf of the Ed Board, I would just encourage everyone to please go out and register for the 5K, even if you can't run it, you can't walk it. If you register for the 5K, it gets donated to the town scholarship. So go out to the website and just sign up.
Great. Thank you, Debbie. Any other board reports? Oh, of course. Thank you, George. I was disappointed.
You know, why miss this opportunity? On behalf of the Astor Knight Foundation, we had a meeting the other day, and we were discussing the potential of having a car show and a carnival together out at the site, and we're concerned about whether or not that project's going to be done. So we would just encourage you to try and move that project along about stabilizing the parking lot, et cetera, putting up the bathroom buildings. I'm not sure about what the progress is on that, but you know, every day is ticking and ticking and ticking. So we'd love to get that project moving forward and completed by then. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, George.
Okay. So in regards to the Zero Waste Power Task Force.
Okay.
Ditto everything that Jim shared in regards to the impact that all the public input has had on this, the Solid Waste Authority and the executive committee members. I would just share, Richard Ramcharatar is not here today because he's out in California attending a conference out there to get more education, to bring back, to bring back to the authority, to help educate everyone. But while he's out there, he's meeting so many people and just, he's learned from so many of different cities, states, counties, where they have shut down all, they have no more incinerators, or they're in the process of shutting down their last one that's existing. So this is something that's happening out there. It's not just a dream. It's happening. I just want to ask, just let everyone know, our next task force meeting is Wednesday, March 13th, here at Town Hall. We hope to invite your friends, whether they're in Weston or Cooper City, Davie Plantation, wherever, because we just need to grow this so that it's made up of residents throughout the entire county, so everybody can reach out to all the members. I will tell you, at the last meeting, I got several comments, and they were surprised how many people actually did show up on Valentine's Day. Apparently, it was Valentine's Day and Ash Wednesday. And in the end, we actually had to tell people the meeting was over because nobody was getting up to leave because we got into working groups. And so I would encourage as many people as possible to come out to our next meeting in March, so we can really get everyone's hands dirty and really start getting out there. Thank you.
Great. Great. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I just want to say a couple of words about that. Debbie, thank you for all that you're doing. Richard, Jim, thanks for all you're doing. You know, we are really starting to build some momentum on this, and it's exciting to see, both from the executive committee, but Southwest Ranches is leading this charge. At these executive meetings, it's Southwest Ranches that is there, that is speaking the most, that is making the most points, that's really delivering the information to the executive committee, where they're learning about new things and understanding what's going on here. So I couldn't be more proud of the residents of our town and how they stepped up and have taken time out of their personal schedules to lead the charge and to make sure that we make the right decisions as a county for this. So it's exciting to see. Thank you all for the time that you all are putting into it. It's very much appreciated. All right. Any other board reports? Seeing none, any council, our council comments? Who'd like to go first?
I'll go.
Great. Thank you, Gary.
Just real quickly, thank you, everybody, for coming. And out there in YouTube land, how many do we have? 15, outstanding. The number gets better every year, every meeting. One was my wife. Hi. Hi, honey. Just a few things to go over real quick. I really don't have much of, other than just some minor announcements. We have hazmat at the barn on the 27th of April, so everybody should, you know, save their stuff for that. Don't put it in the trash. Take it to their batteries, tires, paint cans, whatever. The 24th, this Saturday, there's a lot going on. There's a canal dedication at 9:00 PM, sorry, 9:00 AM. Bob, I'm sure you'll talk more about that. And we have the horse show at 8:00, starts at 8:00 AM at the Equestrian Park, the fun horse show for kids. We have the Flowmobile on the 28th here at Town Hall from 10:00 to 2:00. On the 9th, we have Water Matters from 9:00 to 3:00. We have the 5K Walk Run on the 9th, starts at 7:30 at the barn. And by the way, the Water Matters is at Treetop Park in Davie. I urge everybody to register now, as Debbie mentioned, even if you don't walk or run, it's a great contribution to the scholarship fund. We have something new that we're going to be trying, the chess challenge on the 30th of March here at Town Hall from 10:00 to 2:00 PM. All skill levels. If you've never played a game of chess in your life, this is for you to come and learn it, at least one, and you'll be put in the proper category. Me, I'll be up against probably some four-year-old, but you know, something to that effect, because I haven't played in 30 years. We have the barn dance coming up, March 16th. Tickets are still available. You can get them at Town Hall at the front desk. It starts at 7:00 PM. It's a very, very fun event. Everybody enjoys it, and there's a lot of camaraderie amongst your neighbors, and I urge everybody to attend that. And I'm going to wrap it up with that, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Gary.
I'll go real quick.
All right.
I just got a couple of comments. Gary, you briefly mentioned the canal dedication we're having this coming Saturday, the 24th, at 9:00 AM over at, where's my note, the southeast corner of Hancock and Lorre Road. If you came, Vince stopped attending meetings about five years ago because he was very old, and if he ever came to a town council meeting, Vince would be sitting in that corner chair. I can still see him there. He served the town. He served the water management district. He has been, he was involved here the whole time he lived here, and he was one of the original people over in Sunshine Ranches here forever. Everybody knows him who lived in Sunshine Ranches. I want to invite you out. What we're doing, Vince was all about water. If you asked him what needed to be improved in town, he had his list mentally prepared, and he could rattle off 10 or 15 things right off the bat. So what's appropriate for Vince? We're going to dedicate a canal in his name, and that'll be there forever. So we'll have an opportunity to, anytime you're going down the road there, you'll have an opportunity to remember Vince. That was item number one I wanted to mention. Kathy, thank you for bringing up one of my peeves, Calusia. We found out the hard way as well in our neighborhood because a doggy was chewing on it, and the doggy had to be rushed off to the vet, and the doggy made it, but the doggy got super sick from it. I don't think, it's a cheap plant. It grows fast. I think it's the ficus of tomorrow. But what's happening is, everybody's putting it up because they want their privacy. I don't blame you. But there's other options that don't kill our animals. So I'll be putting something in the next town newsletter about it, because I think the word needs to get out. Debbie also brought up Roundup. So let me tell you a personal story there. We've lost two dogs in the last 10 years to what we think is Roundup. One dog died of kidney failure. When the doctor did his analysis on the poor dog, he came back and said her kidneys failed because they were being attacked by a chemical. We had no idea. I mean, this is before Roundup was attributed to lymphoma in people. This is before it all broke in the news. Then, last year, we had a dog that we bought to replace, poor Daisy. It was Athena. She was a great dog, really well-trained. At eight years old, she came down with lymphoma. Now, there are other options. My wife insists on me using something more natural. I am mixing up high-strang vinegar with salt. I spray that on anything. It kills it off just as fast as Roundup used to, but it's not toxic. There are a couple of other chemicals that are available out there that they haven't proven any toxicity on yet that are effective. Do your homework there. I'm not going to start suggesting commercial chemicals. But the natural methods, it's all over the internet, and it works, and it's a heck of a lot cheaper than Roundup. Last time I bought Roundup, eight or nine years ago, spent 85 bucks for two and a half gallons. Salt and vinegar are a heck of a lot cheaper. So I'd encourage you to look into it, because Debbie's right. It's killing our animals. If you have a dog or a cat, ask your vet what they're seeing, and they're going to say to you out here where we all use it, because it's necessary to keep everything at bay, it's killing our critters, and it's bad. Last thing is the chess event. I was calling it a chess tournament. It's not a tournament, because we're not here to compete against each other. It's just an opportunity to have fun. And when I was in college the first time, when I was young, at the normal age, one of my fraternity brothers and I played chess almost every day. It's 45 years ago. That's the last time I played chess. So I can't wait to just get out there and have some fun and try to remember all the rules and go back through it. And I believe it's free, isn't it? So yeah, I want to invite everybody out as well to have some fun with us. Thank you. Thank you, folks, for coming out tonight.
Mayor?
All right. I'm up.
Oh, okay.
Yep. All right. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. First, we're going back on the incinerator issue. Now, the incinerator issue, the property where it's being located, for those that are just hearing about it for the first time, is at the Broward County landfill site on Sheridan. Every member of the town council opposes it, and I would guess that 90, 95% of the town opposes this as well. We have two groups that are working in conjunction to oppose this incinerator. First, we got the Zero Waste Task Force that Debbie spoke of earlier. Debbie, Richard, Jim, you're working very, very hard for that, and it's very, I recognize your efforts. Next, the Zero Waste Advisory Board, which was recently created. This advisory board is constructed to develop plans to reduce our town's solid waste. And that group actually needs members. We need members to sit on those seats for that Zero Waste Advisory Board. We need some help with that one. I want to thank Debbie and Richard and Jim Lasky. You're fighting this incessantly, and thank you. Thank you from me. Next... Next, the Rural Arts and Design Advisory Board, they're working on some of this year's plans. We're going to have both a Halloween and a holiday home decorating contest this year. I hope to see some people participating with this new idea for the Halloween decoration contest. Last, speed signs. I don't know, I guess they, are they over there anymore, or are they picked up already? We used to have a bunch of boxes back over there, and George picked up the boxes, he's putting in the signs. Sunshine Ranches will be putting signs on Mustang Trail, looking west, Luray Road, looking west, and on Hancock Road, facing south. Now, these signs are not just a regular speed sign, these signs have a display that shows how fast you're going. When you exceed the 25 mile an hour speed limit, that everywhere in Sunshine Ranches is 25. I think there's only one road that's 40, and that's Mather, right? Okay. It'll flash if you're exceeding the speed limit, and it's to help slow the speeding down. My number-one complaint is speeding, and I'm sure that my colleagues can share on that issue as well. And hopefully, this will help slow down the traffic. That wraps up my comments.
Thank you, David. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to also speak about this new board that we started, the Zero Waste Board. I want to thank the town for doing it, for allowing it to be, and I want to thank Ms. Debbie for stepping up to be the chair. This board here is going to find ways to reuse, recycle, and refurbish. All right? Recycle, reuse, refurbish. That's the three goals right there, that this town needs to accomplish, to keep waste out of the landfill, and so we don't have an incinerator. I believe this board, when they get into it, and they're picking the board members now, will be the leading edge that Broward County needs. Southwest Ranches will be the one that people follow. I have the opportunity and the pleasure of serving on the Broward County League of Cities' Directors Board. And that board speaks about waste every single time. Now, these are municipal elected officials, mayors, councilmen, so forth, and there's 31 municipalities, and believe me, they are getting the word that Southwest Ranches is looking for ways to make the garbage go away. Reuse, recycle, refurbish. So, that's what this board, and I believe that we're going to be a leader in that as far as Southwest Ranches, and I'm really proud of it. Second thing is that the Broward County Water Board, that I have the opportunity to sit on, the Directors Board there, they're dealing with ways to get rid of the flooding in South Broward. There's a ton of money that's needed, $15 billion is needed over the next two years just to get a few pumps in. Corps of Engineer doesn't have that money. 15 years ago, they didn't have the money. So, we're faced with a real situation. If you read some of the reports, the groundwater's coming up, an inch, two inches, three inches every two to three years. How does that affect us? That affects your groundwater. Your septic tanks and sewers won't work anymore, they won't have a place to drain. So, these are issues that the board is dealing with, and they are also dealing with the waste issue. All right? You've got to put the landfill someplace, you've got to put the incinerator someplace, and they know that wherever they put it, it's going to affect the water that we drink and the air we breathe. I have the opportunity to sit on the South Florida Regional Planning Council Board. Now, this deals with all of South Florida just about. They are in the process of determining ways to make better transportation. They deal with public housing, which we don't really have the opportunity out here to have. We don't have the property like most do, low-income housing, and that's a great board. I enjoy serving on that board. As you know, I attend all of the Homeowners Association meetings, I attend the council meetings here, and I attend the board meetings here. That's 16 a month that I attend. Why? Because I like this town. There's nothing that I do that doesn't have the interest of this town at heart. There's never ordinance, there's never a bill that comes through for me that I don't read three or four times, ask questions about, get answers, and make a decision as to what I think is best for this town. And I think most of you, and I see most of you sitting here, I've either said hi to you, shook hands with you at one time or another during my campaign of this three and a half years. All right? So, I just want you to keep that in mind when this election comes up. I am running for reelection.
You're very serious.
Thank you. I'd also like to say that I'd like to thank the Comprehensive Planning Board. They are working very hard right now to come up with some new ideas and some new things that they're going to present to the town council. You'll be hearing about those. But the comp board that George served on for a number of years does a tremendous job, and they work hard to keep Southwest Ranches' rule. Remember that. Nothing that they do either goes against what we believe in. So, just keep that in mind, all right? I'm proud to say that here, a few months ago, if most of you remember, we come up, and I thank the council, we come up with an ordinance for fireworks. A lot of people don't like fireworks, but a lot of people do. So, in order to please people, and to make it so that people had a chance to set off fireworks, we come up with an idea of doing ABCD. If you do ABCD and meet the requirements for the permit, you're issued a permit by the town. And I will say that next week sometime, or this coming weekend, there is a home in Rolling Oaks that will be setting off the low decimal fireworks, they're having a party, and we changed the rules about the party, where if you've got four kids, you can have a party for each now, not just two. So, this is some of the things that we've done, and I'm very proud to say that I was part of that, so that everybody has a chance. We're not excluding anybody, but we work so that everybody, you know, so everybody can work together. All right? And lastly, I'm proud to say that the Public Safety and Traffic Committee is back together. I have one of the board members sitting here now, let me see if I see another, Ed's sitting here. We had a meeting this past week, they brought in the sergeant from the Motor Division of Davie. He gave a great presentation about what they do and how they do it, where they set up, how they set up, and why they set up. We have 12 signs going in. Each council person was able to choose three specific sites in their area. So, these signs that David and some of the rest spoke about will be there, and you'll see these signs, all right? These are just to remind you, and it's our residents that are speeding through the town, to slow down. You forget sometimes, your mind's in a different place, you'll see these signs to slow down. And here's the nice part, next year, I think that we have in the budget, we can buy 12 more. So, pretty soon, not only you're going to see them on the main arteries or into the areas going into the side streets, but you're going to see them out on Griffin, you're going to see them out on Dykes. Tell people to slow down, you know? Just tell people to slow down. And that's what we're looking for. So, just remember that anything that comes up, I will do it for the best of the town. You'll see me out with my little green signs and my hand waving, and I'd appreciate your support. Thank you. Mayor, that's it.
Thank you, Jim. All right. Just wanted to mention a few things. First of all, Kathy, thank you for bringing that to our attention. I was, actually, to be honest with you, I wasn't aware that Calusia was an issue. So, thank you for bringing that to our attention. I think, definitely, we want to, Bob, appreciate you're going to write an article on it, I'm sure I'm going to mention it as well, get the word out there, because it's popping up all over the place. It's huge. Sterling Road. So, this is an issue that came up as, I think it was a meeting or two ago, regarding a code issue and trees that had to be pulled out, and I was like, what, you know, what is that all about? You know, right-of-way that wasn't there initially, and then had to be given, and I was like, this sounds like, you know, something's really going on here. So, we dug into that, and it turns out that the right-of-way that we're talking about is, the town is requiring residents to give up the right-of-way to, that would be extending Sterling Road further west of 166th. If somebody said to me, "I want to extend Sterling Road beyond 166th to the west," I would say, "There is no way that you're going to have my support to do that." I don't want that road going any further. I don't want more through-traffic coming through there. And so, why are we, you know, why are we requesting right-aways for that? We should be giving all those right-aways back, as far as I'm concerned, to make it as difficult, if anybody were ever to try and do that in the future, to make it as difficult as possible to do that. And so, I'm looking for consensus from the council to proceed with that, that we change direction on Sterling Road and direct staff to return those right-aways back to the property owners, so they get their property back, and that we don't require the giving of right-aways on Sterling Road any further.
That's a good idea, Steve. I'd love to see a schematic of what we're talking about, because some areas may not have a right-of-way or an easement.
Well, a lot of them don't have the right-of-way right now, but that's what's happening, is we're grabbing it.
Yeah, I know. But I'm just saying, I'd like to see a plan.
Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
See a visual plan.
Okay. So, Russell, yeah, maybe you can bring that, and we'll discuss it in the next, make it a discussion item on the next council meeting? Okay.
Mayor, real quick, if I could.
Yes.
I come out here to buy property in 70 when I come back from service. That was one of the reasons that I didn't buy a piece of property there, although it had an airstrip there. And my uncle owned the plane, I thought it'd be the greatest thing in the world, but Sterling Road was not there where it is now. Sterling Road was back there at Volunteer, it didn't go through. But the prospect of it going through stopped me. I see no reason whatsoever, like you said, for Sterling Road to ever go through. So, you know, I would be in total agreement with that. Thank you.
We can just put more traffic on 172nd, we don't need that.
We don't need it. No, no, it's, yeah. I don't see any advantage to it, and frankly, you know, we, well, yeah, there's no reason for us to be taking that right-of-way. That's people's property, and I will say this in that particular one, and Gary, you make a good point, let's take a look at it. I will say a couple of other things, just things to look at when you do see the backup of it. There is a horse trail on there, but it's on the south side of the road, and that right-of-way is already there. So, we're not talking about that. That is still there, and it will be there. The right-of-way we're talking about here is actually on the north side of the road, and it's for the road, it's not for a horse trail. And so, it should not in any way affect that. After we get through with this discussion, assuming we all are in agreement that we want to proceed in this way, I would actually like to, I'm not sure what the best group is, maybe it's comp board, I'm not sure what it is, but I'd like to kind of review the town and see where else we're grabbing right-aways, and make sure that it's in alignment with what we see for the future trafficways for our town. Make sure that what we're hoping will happen is actually what's being executed in the back office, so.
Good idea.
Mayor, didn't we recently?
That would be the Traffic and Infrastructure Board.
Right.
Drainage and Infrastructure.
Drainage and Infrastructure, yeah, drainage, that's right, okay.
Yeah, Mayor, didn't we recently here, past year or so, give back property to some property owners that had been kind of taken away from them, a long strip?
Yeah.
Just recently? Yeah, that was great, yeah, that was a great thing, right.
Yeah, we've done it, we've done it, hit and miss, but I think, this one really surprised me, I'll be honest with you. I did not think we were taking Sterling Road right-aways. I just didn't, because there's no way we want that road to go in place. So, it really surprised me when I heard that's what was happening, and so then I'm just wondering what else, you know, is out there that maybe we just don't realize, you know, some direction from the past. So, we'll pick that up in the next meeting and hopefully get that resolved. All right. I wanted to touch on an item that I've brought up before, and I had some residents asking me questions about it, so I thought I would just bring it up quickly again. Putting together this kind of a workshop for three or four nights, for, basically for new residents, but certainly anybody is welcome. I look at it for new residents, and also especially realtors that are in the community or are selling properties in the ranches, where it'll give a good overview of kind of who we are, what we're about, kind of our basic ordinances that are unusual compared to our neighbors, things that people might not be aware of when they first move into town, and a chance to get to know the council, get to know the administration, get to know the folks if they run into issues, if they do permitting or things like that, that they would be able to talk to. We won't let George go there, because, no. But, you know, give them a good overview of really what the ranches is all about, our vision, and so hopefully, it will allow them upfront to kind of fit in and have the right expectations moving forward. So, I'm going to move with that. The last thing I wanted to touch on was, it's been up a couple of times, I'll just briefly touch on it, is the chess challenge. I'm super excited about that. I ran into, or I was speaking with Mike Ryan, the mayor of Sunrise, earlier this week, and you may or may not know that he actually initially kicked this off in Broward County. He did it first in Sunrise, and so he's big on this, and it's been a huge success for Sunrise in bringing folks out and kind of bringing the community together. So, I'm super excited about that. I think that we'll have fun at it, and as has been said, it's for all different skill levels. I know the rules of chess, I know how to lose chess, so I'll be there, and, you know, but it's going to be a lot of fun. And Mike is going to actually try and join us for the first time we have our chess challenge. So, I'm super excited about that as well. I'm hoping he can make it and can enjoy it, and maybe him and I can play a game of chess and he can kick my butt, so.
I heard there's a shark on that. So, I hear you want to do that.
I know, he's good. We've got a lot of great chess players around here, so I'm not expecting to win any games, but I'll have fun. All right. Thank you all. So, that concludes my comments. Any legal comments tonight?
No legal comments tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Administrative comments?
Mayor, just have a couple of quick items. I had previously talked about the Town of Davie's Community Police Academy that was going to be scheduled in March. They've announced that they've canceled that due to a lack of a lot of interest. They were hoping to get more interest, but they're looking to reschedule that in the fall. So, if there was anyone that wanted to participate but couldn't because of time conflicts, we'll have another opportunity in the fall to participate. So, be on the lookout for future announcements regarding that. Also wanted to bring to your attention something in the agenda report for the next item, item number nine, it'll come up, but I just wanted to bring it up to your attention right now. There's two proposals for the resurfacing, and there's a small arithmetic error there in the staff report, not in the resolution. The two quotes actually totaled $36,499.74, not the 26 cents that's indicated there. So, just a slight adjustment. Again, that's not in the resolution, so the resolution doesn't need to be changed, we don't need to amend any kind of motion there. Actually, now that I look at it, it is in the title, so we do need to maybe address that. The last thing is, I've spoken to the town attorney about our agreement with cap government. In our agreement with them, we have provisions for renewals that are administratively done. They are seeking to renew the agreement with us for the additional two-year period, had no change to the terms and conditions. So, I just wanted to bring it to your attention for the record, to put it on the record that we're going to renew that for two years. That's all I have, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Russell. All right. Item number nine.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a purchase order in the amount of $36,499.74 with Her Homes LLC for the Rolling Oaks Park driveway and parking lot improvements, authorizing the execution of the purchase order and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any council comment on this item?
Mayor, this is really a long time in coming. You know, I've been part of Rolling Oaks, they thought I lived out there for a long time, but this is really going to be a great benefit to the whole town once that's done. So, I'm really looking forward to that.
Yeah.
It's the next best step to improve it.
Yeah, yeah, it gets a lot of use, it'll be really a benefit, absolutely. All right, any public comment on the item? Seeing none. Is there any?
Yes, I was under the impression.
If you're coming up, come up to the microphone, please.
Hi, could you, I'm sorry if I missed it earlier, but I was under the impression we were going to be discussing proactive code enforcement.
That's later in the agenda.
Thank you. I apologize.
No worries.[1762.51]
The repaving, is that for the circular part right outside the Rolling Oaks barn?
Yeah, so, yes, any other comments or questions?
Yep, and so I noticed that there's some parking there, some large vehicle parking there. Do you think that may be destroying some of that parkway, and maybe the person who has that maybe be able to contribute to this? Anybody notice that? Drive around there, no?
You're talking about the hay truck.
Well, take a look when you're on your way home.
The hay truck.
What's that?
The hay truck.
Sure, hay truck, the hay semi truck.
Yeah.
On the land there, maybe something that could be changed, maybe less damage to the road in the future for us.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed.
Mayor, can I just address that last comment?
Yeah, sure.
Yes, I was made aware of that, and it is a conservative mind, I don't want to put this money into repaving this road and then have the hay trucks there, so we did get the contact information for the person that we are aware of that parks that truck there, and we will be making contact and asking them to make other arrangements.
Great, good, thank you, Russell. All right, if we can please call the roll.
Councilmember Al Britton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kozinski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Then we have the proposed budget calendar. Emile, you have comments on that?
This is basically for us to serve as a guide, and step by step, and the public to know what needs to be done in order for us to finalize the budget. Here, we're asking for council by consensus to accept the calendar, so we can move forward with the budget.
Great, thank you. Any council comment on this item?
When's your birthday?
Yeah, I haven't checked the calendar yet to see how many meetings we have on my birthday this year.
When is, what day?
Fifteenth.
You're in the clear.
All right, all right.
I lied.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment closed. If we can please call the roll. Or is there, this is just a notification, not a vote?
If we get consensus from the council that they accept the calendar, the proposed calendar.
I think we're good.
Okay, that's always.
Thank you, Emile.
Direction, thank you.
All right, item number eleven. Councilmember Kozinski.
All right. Council, during the last meeting we had regarding proactive versus reactive code enforcement, it came to my attention that there was a significant portion of the town that is opposed to additional proactive code enforcement items. And just as a brief rundown, the current five items that we have that are for proactive are fill without a permit, bulk waste out early, potholes on private roads, dark skies enforcement, and overgrown lots. I was, I'm pretty happy with these five items, and some discussions that I had with residents, they were adamantly opposed to additional proactive, and during a discussion came up, well, why don't we amend the town charter? So, I said I'd ring it up to the council, and, I mean, I'd like to hear some public input on this, and then see where council feels on this, if that's okay.
Sure.
All right.
So, let's open it up to the public. Please open up, will we open up the mic, and welcome to come up and pass on your thoughts on, we did have an extensive conversation on this last meeting, but it's always good to make sure we get all the thoughts out there.
Someone's got to kick it off.
Yeah, thank you, Chris.
Chris Brownlow, five three oh one, Thoroughbred Lane. A lot of you know I've grown up out here, this month makes fifty-five years. So, prior to being a town, yes, you need rules and regulations, but I think some of what I've been listening to lately is getting a little Nazi-esque, and we're getting away from being neighborly and helping our neighbors. People are afraid to report something, so they expect you all to report something, so they think we should go proactive. You know, if you've read through that document, it's extensive, you could find something in everyone's yard. I do not feel this is the direction to go. We're here so that we can have our farm animals, our pets, our children can have the open space, be exposed to nature, enjoy quiet, and enjoy the dark. You know, we talk about when folks come in, do they understand what they're moving to? You know, we've provided them with documents before, but do they understand, are they signing off on these, if that's even allowable, as a code of conduct? And perhaps we're not educating folks to what they're buying, are the realtors educating them? Do they know what they're walking into, and what are possible violations? You know, our riders, our kids, our pedestrians, they need an ounce of safety, and we're talking about swales, we're talking about growth, but it's detracting from the problem, I think that's part of this, is getting people to adhere to safety and slow down. So, we have these swales, and they're part of the trails, they're supposed to be for the riders, and this all kind of encompasses into this one, you know, very large discussion. You know, I have a couple of other roles on board, serve an HOA president, but I have to be careful because I need to represent everyone, so I need to listen to what my folks want, what their input is, what their decisions are. I cannot put my name out on anything. As a resident, as a taxpaying resident, I can say I do not want to see any more proactive code. That's not why I've grown up out here, or I've stayed out here, and from several of my friends, likewise, they've expressed the same concern, so thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Eddie Flores, fifty-eight oh one, Southwest two ten terrace, one of my many properties in Southwest Ranches. I'm here again today for the fourth time to tell you all that I'm basically totally against code enforcement, totally. This is not why we moved here a long, long time ago. I don't want to feel like I'm back in Cuba, Venezuela, or China, having code enforcement, driving around, taking pictures. I don't want none of that. That's the reason why we moved here, and my parents moved here, to get away from all that. Also, I would like to see a vote, to see who's going to be voting for this, so come November, as voters, we will know who to vote for. Thank you so much.
Good evening, my name is Bill Byrd, my property is on two ten terrace as well. I can't help to sit here and read that sign right there behind you, preserving our rural lifestyle. That's why we've come here. We didn't come here to be policed, we didn't come here to be pushed around with the way we want to live life. That's why people are attracted to your city, is so that they don't have this overpressing hand telling them what they can do for birthdays, this is ridiculous. Bonfire, being cited for a bonfire, getting out of control. Preserving a rural lifestyle, that means not having somebody overshadowing everything that you do. It's about preserving your family. Fifty-five years she's lived in this city, boy, the changes that she has seen, totally against this proactive oversight. I think it's, I think it's, that money could be used more wisely than other places. I thank you for your service, appreciate your help on all these things.
Kathy Cox, forty-nine forty, Thoroughbred Lane. As I said before, I'm not a real proactive type of code enforcement person. I'm, I moved out here, I'm just a young person that came out here twenty-four years ago, I'm, just haven't been here that long. But I also think that there are some things that, you know, we do need to police. The fill issue is very harmful to many, many people whose houses were built a little earlier, and you really don't want to see, you know, somebody's house flooded because the neighbor next door filled his whole lot in, and, you know, his groundwater, his groundwater is going to the neighbor. So, I think there are some issues that do require some proactive use, and you've got a pretty good list here. I'm not big on the overgrown lots, I let people own, but, okay, I can live with that. What I worry about is if you put it into the charter, you're going to tie your hands. And I was a council member in Davie for nine years before I moved out here, and I still really, I'm pretty fond of that town. I think they do a pretty good job considering where they are. But, you know, when you, when you do these things that, where you put in the charter that you can't do proactive code enforcement, what do you do the next time some issue comes up that is important to everybody? And if you tie your hands, you're really going to do yourself a disservice. I think the people who elect you will elect people who know what we want to do out here. I think they will elect people who are pro-rural and who want to preserve our lifestyle. And, you know, I can go down my street, I can find stuff, I can find code enforcement violations, but I'm not interested in that. I'm interested in everybody having their own shot, so, but again, don't tie your hands. And I think you all are smart enough, and the electors are smart enough to elect the people who will reflect their vision.
Lori Parish, I live on La Ray Road, and I certainly appreciate Kathy coming out and speaking about the equestrian community. One of the reasons that Kathy was a councilwoman when I lived in Davie, and has an excellent record. But one of the things I'm concerned about, if you don't enforce the hedges in our swales. Jeff and I were on La Ray and Appaloosa right before Christmas time, and there were several people on horses, it was about dusk, it was dark, but it wasn't, you know, real dark yet, and they had Christmas lights around the collars of their horses, and Christmas lights around their necks, a battery operated. And, I mean, for the first time, I guess, you know, putting up the tree and rushing around, the first time it felt like Christmas, there was something nice about. But what my concern is, I plant plants everywhere, and all of you have been to my house, I have plants everywhere. I've collected rare plants, and orchids, and native, and garden for butterflies, and bees, and birds, and wildlife, but I never put a plant in our swale, because if you look at Suntryne Ranch's newsletter, it says an equestrian community. If you look at our signs, it says an equestrian community. And my pet peeve is people who put hedges in the swale, and I didn't even know until I spoke to Kathy yesterday that calusa is poisonous for horses, dogs, cats, birds. But the thing about it is, is I thought that, in fact, we asked about a copy of the trails at the comp plan board meeting, where are the trails? I thought the swales, especially in areas like La Ray Road, and Mustang, and Sheridan, I thought those swales were all trails, that's why the town had the big wide right of ways. And what I think, if you're not, if you don't want proactive, then how about a polite little nudge? Because when you see people planting, and a lot of times we drive by and we see people planting in their swale, the hedge in their swale instead of inside their fence, somebody, code, could just stop and say, excuse me, we don't want you to do that because we want safety for our horseback riders, and the people, and we live in an equestrian community. And I even asked Chris, could we ask for a postponement on this issue till our homeowners meet next week and vote? Because I don't know about the rest of you, but I know when I go on one hundred and sixty-six, the end of Sterling Road, and then turn up one hundred and sixty-six, there's one on Sterling, and then there's another brown-like sign that says, watch for horses, and drive slowly. So, you can be proactive and be polite about it, you don't have to cite somebody, maybe you give them a warning, but I think ninety percent or ninety-five percent of the people would do the right thing if they knew why. You know, it's got so, La Ray Road, we must have fifteen of them, but what they do is that one sees the one, puts in the calusa, the next one puts it in, and it starts just down the street from it, and it's going up the whole street. So, I mean, I think that if you're not going to be proactive, I think code enforcement should certainly be allowed before people spend fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars and put them in, and then you're wanting to take them out and put them on the other side, before they spent the money, I bet if people knew, the majority of them would comply. So, there's some things, I think, go above.
I need to ask you to wrap it up.
Okay. Some things are just good common sense, and to preserve, if you're really about preserving rural neighborhoods, because two horse ranches on our street are for sale, then I ask you come up with a polite way to tell people before they've spent the money, and I don't know if it's in your new homeowner's packet, but I've talked to some people in the neighborhood about starting a welcome wagon, we'd go over with a list of things. But I think it's common sense, and I think you should preserve that for the trail riders.
Michael Cardenas, Southwest two hundred and tenth terrace. So, what I feel about the proactivity more than anything is that not having a proactive town is more of a personal touch. It's something, as a real estate broker, I see and hear a lot in conversations that it's like the light on Southwest Ranches. That's what everybody appreciates, is that the policing is not going on, and that's why they want to bring their tax money to the town. I understand that it could be a little more work, being non-proactive and being reactive. You have to have a little more personality from a code compliance standpoint. Working with Julio and different code compliance issues, I've never heard from a more personable code compliance officer in my life, and I tell that story to everybody I come in contact with, because it's almost impossible to hear that. He does everything he can to keep the peace in the town, and that's the personal touch that makes sense. It's the personal touch that makes sense to the whole town, and that's my biggest reason on not thinking it makes any sense to become proactive town. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, I'm Sasha Figueroa, fifty-one fifty, Southwest one hundred sixty-third. So, unlike many of you, I've only been here for two years, and I've fallen in love with the town, but I am utterly against proactive code enforcement, although my experience has been wonderful dealing with everyone in the town, including Julio and Concepcion and everyone else here, you know, everyone's always been very personable, very open to answer all and any of my questions. I agree that people will do the right thing if we know the rules. So, having things listed is wonderful, but proacting code enforcement will just open a door that we may not be able to shut later on. It's going to open up the door for neighbors to harass neighbors and be unneighborly relying on the town to do their work. So, just as an example, New Year's Day, not New Year's Day, Christmas Eve, I had my neighbor called the cops on me because I was pressure cleaning my yard at four in the afternoon before family arrived. So, again, we're utterly against proactive code enforcement. I choose to pay twenty-four grand a year in Southwest Ranches, I could have given my money to Weston, but I love this town, and this is where I want to raise my children. Thank you.
I guess I'll be last. John Garotti, hundred and sixty-second Avenue. Sorry, Gary, I know you don't like this, but I'm used to it already. So, proactive, reactive, we had a huge meeting a couple of weeks ago, you guys saw the reaction. It's on video. What Mr. Kozinski's offering is a commitment, correct? So, you're dedicating something to be permanent, something like that, yes, you guys should sit and discuss. I'm totally against anything other than what you currently have, currently as a proactive versus reactive list. Let the people vote officially. You should, guys, you guys should include more of these big topic items on a vote when there's an election. It's a huge topic, let residents participate in that. Code enforcement, it's not the department, it's not who works in the department. Why is code enforcement such a big issue in Southwest Ranches? It's our way of operating our code enforcement division. It's not Julio, people lambast him online all the time. The guy's been a communicator, he's, basically has his hands tied. I've said this numerous, numerous occasions. I've actually signed up, and I said this to many people, I've signed up for code enforcement courses. Not that I'm going to go ask Julio for a job, I want to know what I'm talking about when I'm up here. And took a thousand bucks, a lot of my time, still not done with it, but I want to know what I'm talking about, I want to know what a code director has to do, how a town manages its processes. It's not what we do here, and that's the problem. And I've spoken in depth with many, many other code departments, we're not operating in the fashion that we're supposed to. We addressed that in the last town hall meeting when it was code enforcement. We have a manipulation process, it depends on who is making the complaint, circumventing the process. I'm asking for another minute, because I got a very important statement, and I'm the last guy. So, our process isn't right. Why is it not right? We find every way to circumvent, oh, the neighbor doesn't want to put his name on the We find every way to circumvent, oh, the neighbor doesn't want to put his name on the complaint. Well, there's a law that says if you're the complainant, put your name on the complaint. Otherwise, you know, if you're a councilman, you know what you should do? Mediate. Fix it somehow. Don't sic the code enforcement department like your personal police. It's resident bullying. It's not cool. I announced my campaign a couple of weeks ago. I try and walk in here with positive vibes. It's a new year, it's a new world, we have a lot of issues. I announced my campaign a couple of weeks ago.
John, if you're talking about code, you can talk about code.
I am.
I gave you some extra time, but I'm not giving you extra time.
Not for the campaign. No, absolutely. Right, I was just, I talk a little much. I got home to a code violation. From who? Mr. Albritton. Why? Because I had chipping paint on my property. He had the decency to call me after the violation is issued. He sees me every two weeks. This is the problem with code violations. I'm not making this up. Mr. Albritton, I got a code violation. Why? For what reason? Not that I'm anything special. I have OCD. I like things perfect. I have one wall left on.
Wrap it up, please.
One wall left on my house to do. Jim, this is very, very unprofessional. I appreciate you called me, but this isn't the way a councilman operates. It's not. You came in looking for a whole bunch, you came in fishing.
John.
The code enforcement department.
Enough.
That's not cool, and it'll be duly noted. Thank you, guys.
Let me be clear, this is not, it is campaign season, okay? I get that, I get that, I get that, all right? But this is not a place to, this is not a place, I didn't say you made it up. This is a place to respect one another. We're all fellow, we all live in this town, we all have a lot of pride in this town, okay? And let's have respect for one another. When we get up in front here and we talk, let's have respect. Thank you. Yeah. All right. Anybody else? Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. I suspect we all, as council members, have comments. I know I do.
Open it up, open it up to comment.
Okay. This is your thing. Do you want to start off, or?
Yeah, I guess I can. Initially, when I began this, it was to put something on the town charter. But after speaking with a lot of residents and going back and forth, you know, one of the benefits of that is you get to change your mind a little bit and see how you can make it, make it change, but not cut it off. As it stands right now, three votes is all it takes from us up here to add something to proactive. I don't like that at all. I've spoken to a lot and lot of residents, and I thank you for contacting me about this. When I ran in 2020, I ran on the platform of Keep It Rural. I had a phone call from Scott Tomoloso in Sunshine Ranches, and we're discussing, and then he just blurts out, "David, what does Keep It Rural mean to you?" And I thought, not even two minutes, not even two seconds, I said, "Leave me alone." I said, "That's what it is, just leave me alone, that's why the people moved here, leave me alone." And to me, that having an overbearing code enforcement takes away from our freedom. Now, having a reactive is not perfect, and it's not ever going to be, not ever going to be perfect. But proactive, everything is not going to be, is going to be not perfect either, but it's going to be worse. I think everything proactive and making more and more proactive, I think it just creeps into more and more and more government intrusion into our lives. And government can't be there for everything. I think that more and more proactive will lead to a bloated bureaucracy, we're going to have more aggressive code enforcement, and it's going to be a bad thing for us, I think, in that parameter. I didn't feel that it would be sufficient to just put something on the town charter. But what I would like to do is make it a little more complicated to add something to proactive. And not only that, I would like code enforcement to be a little more amicable when approaching a situation with a potential code violation, not necessarily say, "Oh, you're in violation," but, you know, you may have a violation on your property, take concern. I would like maybe a study conducted on any additional proactive code enforcement issues, something to set parameters, maybe increase the votes, just something I'd like to throw out to the council to consider, to make it a little bit more difficult, instead of just a simple three vote. Those are my thoughts.
Good. Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
So folks, I'm going to start right off by saying, I've always been all about keeping us rural, got animals, I've campaigned on it two times. If you were here last time, that's my theme, keeping us rural. Let's work together on these things. But there, Kathy Cox brought it up earlier, there's a challenge with tying our hands with putting this in the charter. I'm going to let you know what it is. Nobody's going to like what I'm going to say, but it's what's happening. Tallahassee is more in running our town. They're taking away the local rights on a lot of things. And one of the things that's going to disappear in the next 10 to 15 years is our wells and our septic tanks. If Broward doesn't take it away from us, the state is. They don't want it because they look at contamination. And also, there's lobbying groups, just like in everything else, that are pushing for municipal water. We have residents in our town that are asking for municipal water, we vote on it at almost every council meeting. Here's the challenge. If the state tells us we have to switch off of wells to municipal water, or off of our septic tanks to sewer, and we don't have code enforcement and we can't make something proactive, what will happen is the state mandates the town to do it. Mandates, not says if you'd like. Mandates. Now, how do we do that? We don't do that by sending out Davie PD. Code enforcement, for those people who absolutely refuse after grace periods and all sorts of things, and I'm just giving you one scenario, code enforcement would have to go out and do that. And that would have to be proactive. We're bound by following the state wall. We don't have an option on a lot of these things. And I'm just giving you one. I mean, it may never happen, but those are the kinds of things that if we tie our hands, we would have to go back out to the public and say, "We want to change this one thing, are you okay with it?" Now, guess what? We don't have a choice. If the residents came back and said, "No, we like our wells just the way they are," and trust me, I love my well, we would have no way to enforce that. And you want to talk about the big lawsuits, I heard a $100 million lawsuit against Joe Carroyal. We will be getting attacked by the state the same way, and it can be the county. Because the county has been pushing to get rid of well and septic tank for probably 10 years now. We've been able to fight it off, we've done a lot of things to keep our lifestyle the way it is. But there are some things that we're not going to be able to change, and we really need to maintain this. Now, David, I like your idea of, you know, if somebody comes up with a harebrained idea of changing something to proactive, we should look at it very heavily, not just a couple of meetings and we pass it. The other part of it is, I don't know if you all know this, but if we wanted to fire our town administrator or our town attorney, it takes four of us. It's not a three-two vote like many other things. And in the past, that caused us some problems where we just could not get rid of somebody until we got that fourth vote. Now, to me, if it's that important to the community, it ought to be at least four, not three-two, okay? And, you know, to me, we should tighten this up, because I really feel strongly about reactive, not proactive. We want to add something to the list, it should be the four of us, or four of us voting yes on it, and at that point. Now, the other side of it is, if you guys don't like what we vote 4-0 or 4-1 on to do something like that, then you have recourse. I remember years ago, when I was on the charter review committee, our first one, there were some people saying that we needed term limits, term limits, term limits. Well, they didn't like somebody who was on the council at the time, so they figured, all right, give him two terms and he's got to get off. Well, you know, you are our term limits. You are what limits us in terms of what we can and can't do. If you don't like what we pass, you vote us out. Just like somebody back there said, "I'll be listening, and, you know, I'll be voting you out." I think it was Eddie who said that. He's right. That's how these things change. If we don't value your lifestyle, your vision, your values, then we shouldn't be up here. Thank you, folks.
Jim?
Let me address the dark horse in the room. What he said was 110% right. I did file a complaint for a resident who is scared to death of Mr. Garotti. Okay? All right? Right. So what the council does is take that responsibility on sometimes because the neighbors are afraid. Now, I come to town with a complaint, I give it to town with the understanding that it would just hold off on it until I could speak to John. Now, I called John on the phone when I heard that this complaint come down, I will tell you that. And I explained to John why it took me a few days to call, and the complaint had already been issued, and I apologized for that. All right? I had some personal issues, deaths in the family, that were very difficult to deal with. So for three or four days there, I had other things on my mind. Well, the complaint got issued. I called John, explained it to him, okay? Man to man, I explained it to him. What happened? I pulled that complaint, he forgot to tell you that, that I pulled that complaint, so it wasn't issued. John promised to take care of the situation. I'm going to hold him to his word. All right? Hopefully that issue gets taken care of, I believe it will. Now, as far as proactive, when this town was formed in 2000, there were no proactive ordinances. We have five right now on the books. Dark skies, overgrown lots, bulk fill, and potholes. All right? How did they get there? Because they became a nuisance to the town. They became a nuisance to the town. They became cancerous, they spread, they grew, and something had to be done. If you tie the council's hands and say there'll be no more proactive anything, you are making, I personally believe you're making a big mistake. I know I'm talking to a hostile crowd here, I understand that. But you're making a big mistake. You and I have no idea what's coming down the road in 20 years. I can tell you what's here right now that's going to become cancerous before you realize it. There are RVs, mobile homes, whatever you want to call them, being parked on people's lots right now, that they're charging rent to people to live in. That's not what our rural lifestyle is all about. If it is, I'm in the wrong damn place, I'll tell you that straight out. I'm in the wrong place. That's not what my rural lifestyle is all about. I don't want that in my backyard, my neighbor's backyard, and that's what we're faced with. Situations like that, you go and tie our hands, and this is what's coming. Now, I want you to think about it. It's not in your backyard right now, God bless, but tomorrow it could be. All right? I have a neighbor down the street that spoke here last meeting. It wasn't in his backyard till about a year ago. Now it's in his backyard, and he has to see it every single day. He has to put up with it. Because Code can't go in there and do anything about it. I'm not saying that Code is going to ever drive around and be a bully, be Nazi, and start writing people up. But even if they did, think about this. Do you have anything that's wrong? All the people that are here complaining about no proactive, if you don't have anything wrong, what the heck are you concerned about? What are you worried about if there's nothing wrong on your property? You can drive to my property every single day, every day, looking for violations. I don't have any. If I have one, I want to correct it. And that is something that we are going to work with, to have Code talk to people, like the mayor said, introduce these packages where people can understand what's happening. I think it'll make a better relationship. But don't tie the council's hands for something that's going to happen in the future, because you don't know what's coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Gary?
Yeah, I'll chime in just briefly. You know, it's interesting, because, you know, you're hearing the various opinions. We don't know, not one person in this entire room can predict what's going to happen in 24 months, anywhere in our town. Three years, four years, five years from now, you don't know. These five, these five things that we have right now that are proactive, they came about because it was necessary. So we don't know what the next necessary thing could be. To give you an idea, the last thing that was put on here was for overgrown lots, that was put on seven years ago by Mayor McKay. Seven years ago. That's how often this really gets reviewed. It's far and few between. I agree with the, maybe we need to tighten it up to four, four votes, 4-1 votes, something like that. I don't see any harm in doing that, because it would prove to how egregious a problem has become. You know, I don't see anything wrong with that. But as far as putting it into the charter, or just handcuffing the council to the point of doom practically, you know, we want, that'll kill our rural lifestyle right away. I mean, we're the last bastion of, you know, what, which, you know, if we didn't have the fill, like, I'll give you a quick, for instance, if we didn't have that fill ordinance, I guarantee you, so many people would be so flooded out right now, they'd be screaming at the gates of town hall, you know? But fortunately, we have it, and we have a well. And I want to commend also the code compliance team, Julio and Manford. They come out, they don't drop a heavy hammer on everybody, they ask, they try to get, they try to get compliance first, before they, before it goes any further. They make the homeowner aware of where the problem is. And here's something interesting that they do that many of you don't know. If you think you have a problem, I do this about every other year, I ask the code department to come out of my house and look around and tell me what I've got wrong. And they do it as a courtesy. And whenever they see something that's not right, they explain it to me, and I fix it, like a broken fenceboard, or something to that effect. And you can, you know, ask Julio, he'll tell you, he comes out, no big deal, stops by, I give him free rein of the property, he looks around, says, "Yeah, you might want to fix that." Somebody might get, might get upset over a crooked fence post, you know? So, and being a council member, I write it up, mm-hmm, if the problem is solved. But they'll do that for every one of you guys, for any property order. They'll just come out and do a courtesy call. And I highly recommend that. And as Jim said, as Councilman Albritton said, if you're not, if there's nothing major wrong going wrong on your property, what are you worried about? You know?
Well, we're worried about the use of power. Absolutely.
All right. I understand that. That's why, that's why I pointed out, that's exactly why I pointed out that the last time that this occurred was seven years ago. And there's nothing, there's nothing being contemplated now for any future use. All this, that was settled last meeting. Why were we rehashing it all over again? I really don't know, but that's, we're here. Okay? So, and that's all I have right now.
It might be because of all the lawsuits, all the money being spent on the attorneys.
All right.
I think that's what it is. Eleven attorneys.
All right, James, James, James. James, you're not, you don't have the floor.
I know.
All right. All right. Thank you again for all of you coming out. You know, my thoughts on this issue is that, a lot of it has already been said, I don't want to, I don't want to rehash a lot of it. But I do feel that there is a place, when we, when we first became a town, everything was reactive. And along the lines of what Gary mentioned, one of the first things that happened were people were starting to bring in fill like crazy. And people, it happened to me. It actually happened to me before we became a town, but it happened to me. We're literally at 10:30 on a Friday night, I was like, "What the heck is going on?" You know, it sounded like I was at a racetrack or something. And all the dump trucks were lined up in front of my house, and they were all backed up to fill my neighbor's yard, which went on for the entire weekend. And you can, you can actually come visit my backyard right now, because it's still full of water from our most recent rain, and it's, that's a leftover of that special weekend that happened over 20 years ago. But it was based on those types of situations that proactive for fill was put in place, because it destroyed the lifestyle of those around it when it wasn't done right. Okay? And so there are situations, and it's true for the other, the other four that were brought up there, they were all brought up because at some situations, you know, you want Code to be able to just go in there, like the fill, you want them to you want code to be able to just go in there like the fill, you want them to be able to show up and stop it, you know? If, if they're, if they're showing up at a complaint that's two or three weeks later, after it's all spread out and everything, it's, 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 it's very difficult to resolve. But if you can stop those trucks when they're still lined up on the road, that's a whole different situation. And so there are situations where the proactive makes sense. However, I think that where we are today is where we need to be. As Gary said, it's been seven years since we had any adjustments, um, I, I think we're in a pretty good balance. Is it perfect? Heck no, I mean, that's why we're all here, is because, you know, we're afraid that it could get worse, we're afraid it could be more proactive, I, I don't see any support for that, I can tell you, I don't support any additional proactive. I definitely do support the thought that we need to make this a four-to-one vote. Heck, I, I would be happy if it was a five-oh vote, um, because it needs to be something that is really critical, that, um, really has, has the consensus of the council, but four-one, five-oh, I'm okay with that. Three-two, I, I'm not really comfortable with that, because that's too easy to change. We have, I'll, I'll be, I wanna add one other, one other thing, that, um, so long as we're talking about this, that I'm, I'm not, actually, two things that I'm not comfortable with, and I brought up one of them last time, um, since then, had some conversations, and it's another one. So, we are preparing to do, or there's a plan that was requested to be put in place for night sky ordinance, to do, to go around town and make sure that we're all complying with that. I wanna say, I'm not comfortable with that, I don't wanna do that. Um, it's just a plan, it's just something that was there, it's already a proactive, so it's not any change, but I don't think what you wanna do, I don't wanna do that. And, and I don't, you know, I, I would like to have council, at least you think about it, we can talk about it another night, but I'm just expressing on the record that I don't think this is right for our town, to be going around and doing that. And, um, and so, I, I, I'll just throw it out there, um, it's not something you were prepared to make comments on tonight, so I won't ask for your comments, but I wanna be clear, uh, I'm not comfortable with it, I don't support it, I don't wanna see it go forward. And then the other thing that I do wanna bring up, and I brought it up last time, is that, um, we are working on some changes for code. A lot of times, Julio does an amazing job, him and his staff does an amazing job, they are, as, as been said here, like I said, I'm repeating some of the stuff that's been said before, but it's worth repeating, they are all about compliance, they're not about levying fines, they're not about, you know, putting someone under their thumb, they're all about compliance and getting people to comply with the codes that are in this town. But there are situations where him and his staff are used as weapons
Yep.
...against neighbors. That time after time after time, um, code violations are thrown out there that are baseless, that are false, and that have to be followed up on, and have to be, have resources of our town spent on, and it's all just to basically harass a neighbor for one reason or another. And that's wrong, and that should not be happening. And so, I, I'm, I'm working, I, I mentioned this last council meeting, since then, I've had a few conversations, um, I want to get your, I haven't gotten any input from you all, I want your input on this. But what I'm thinking about, just to give you a little bit more than what I said last time, um, is I'm thinking that if, if in a, now, this is not finalized, I need your input, okay, so please don't hold me to this, this is probably not gonna be how it's finalized, but that if, if there's three or four violations in account, in, in 12-month period that are false, that are baseless, that from that point on, um, you need, would need to do like a $250 deposit to do a, a code violation. You could still do the code violation, and if it's actual, and if it's real, you get your money back, that's fine. But if you're going to make false accusations,
Use it.
...you're gonna have to pay for it. You know, you're, you're chewing up our time, you're chewing up the resources of town, everybody pays taxes for those resources, and so if you're just gonna use it as a weapon, you're gonna have to pay for it. And, um, so something along those lines is what I'm thinking about, I'd love to hear whether you think it's a good idea, if you think it's a crappy idea, I wanna hear that too. Um, I, I, I need some, I need some feedback on this, but I, we've gotta do something, because it's not right that, um, it's not right for one resident to be using town resources to, um, to harass other residents, yes, yes. So, so we're gonna look for something like that, um, keep your, you know, keep your eyes and ears open, there'll be something more coming on that, and, uh, it's not, it's not ready for primetime yet, but we are working on it, so.
Yeah, and, uh, Mayor, I just wanna add, it, you, you opened up about the weaponizing code.
Yeah.
Um, there's several code cases right now that are in the courts, or going through the court system where there's attorneys involved, um, I'm not gonna mention names, you all knew who they are, but we're all being subpoenaed, deposed, um, whatnot, and, uh, just because we're up here, and because we have the ultimate say over everything, and, uh, it's, that's no fun, by any stretch of the imagination.
Right.
And we're watching neighbors do this against each other.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's, that's what happens when you have reactive code, they're going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, you know, and, and it's mostly frivolous, you know, and so that, so we have to react, and now, and now we're involved in it.
Right. Any other comments, council?
Um, well, Steve, I like the idea that you had about five-oh vote.
I'm comfortable with five-oh vote, um, it's, obviously, look at the room.
Right.
The room has been full, the last two council meetings.
Sure has.
When it comes to code.
And, and that's the reason I wanted this on the agenda, is because I felt it was important from the last meeting that nothing was resolved, I wanted to
Yep.
Bring back some kind of...
Well, no, you had some stuff resolved last meeting.
Yeah.
You know, all, all three of you guys said you're not, you were not, uh, you know, you were against proactive.
Right.
But, uh, but I, I do, I do think that, um, this provides us an opportunity to give more assurance to the residents of the town, that we're, um, you know, we understand that this is not, uh, this is not the direction that you want this town to go, and we, you know, um, the charter, I think, is
That's
...is a step beyond.
Yeah, I agree, I'll agree with that, that
But, uh, the four or five-oh vote, the four-one or five-oh
How do we, how do we facilitate a five-oh vote for that?
Well, I think
Talk about it.
Yeah, let's, um...
Put it on the agenda maybe next time.
I think that's a Keith question.
Um, why don't, why don't, I don't think we need to put it on, I think we've talked about it two meetings in a row.
Yep.
A five-oh vote?
No.
I mean, we can, we can, I mean, I, I don't think this is, I
I'd rather have some time to talk about it, but if you wanna go for it now, Mayor?
What, what I'm, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is this, what I'm saying is this, I, I would rather, tonight, I think the residents are here, um, I think we've fully discussed the topic, um, I think that the only thing left is to say, we don't wanna do anything, we want to provide direction to staff to come up with a four-one vote, or a five-oh vote.
So, okay, good, that's a discussion right there.
Yeah, that's, that's what I think.
'Cause I proposed the four-oh, or four-whatever, so, I'm, I'm okay with it, I just, we've had it, we've had councils in the past that come up with important things like this, and vote on it, and hadn't thought it through. I'm not arguing that this isn't the right time to do it, but I don't wanna step in that trap again, that's happened multiple times.
And I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying we're voting.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, we would be giving direction to staff
Good.
...to come up with a plan.
Good.
A change in ordinance or whatever, that would demand
Perfect.
...that would require either a four-one or a five-oh vote.
Totally supportive.
And then that would come back.
Good.
I just don't see the purpose of having another meeting, bring everybody back out for that.
Sure, that sounds good.
I think we're there.
I agree.
Yeah. Yeah, Mayor, uh, uh, just to point out an interesting thing, at the last meeting, I was doing some research on, on, uh, proactive side of the code that we'd enforce, and I floated the idea by, uh, Russell to remove one item, and that was the overgrown lots, and, 'cause I didn't think it was that significant, well, correct, correct me if I have the wrong number, but I think he told me that, that last year was over a, 140 citations
Yeah.
...on that, and I, I was shocked at how prolific that was.
I, I remember, I remember the conversations, it's another one, I almost use that as my example rather than fill, 'cause I remember that one. Um, you know, there were, there were many situations where residents would come to me and say, listen, I've got this lot that's next to me, I, you know, the owner is up in Pennsylvania or someplace like that, they don't need to look at this thing, um, but, you know, I'm getting tired of seeing it, and, um, and, and so why not just, you know, we're not, why not, when, when code is around, you know, they see it, let's just cite them, let's get it cleaned up, keep our town looking decent, you know, and this is not even a resident that's, that's here, it's just a property owner that's, you know, that's not taking care of the property. They don't have to see it every day, we do.
Right, and that, that overgrown lots issue, Terry Fernandez, Sunshine Ranch has called me, because the, uh, lot next to her, the developers fell out of money, couldn't, couldn't continue the project. Coyotes took home, and they were killing her livestock.
Yeah.
So
It's important.
Town took, took action on it, and
Every one of those ones that's on there
That's right.
...that's proactive, was a very vigorous conversation.
Yeah.
Every one of them, none of them were put on there
Willy-nilly.
Willy-nilly, yeah.
Well, the, one of the other major things that I recall from that was the safety issue. If you've seen maluku trees burn
Yeah.
...they could take out the neighborhood.
Right, right.
Anyway.
So, do we want to give, I'm sorry, Jim, go ahead.
Mayor, a lot of these violations, Gary and I sit through these violations, are repeat offenders. I, I know that may sound strange to people, but they don't care about their neighbors. They get violations, they do this, and then they're repeat offenders, whether it's fill, whether it's overgrown lots, or whatever, alright? So, you know, you go after them, but they don't care, it, the rules don't apply to them, and, and that's, that's very difficult, you know, to, they, they come here and, and six months later, they're back again, so, you know, this is a thing that, that code can, can stop, and, and, like I said, we can be more aggressive as far as code talking to them, saying, hey, look, get this done, but there are people who, no matter how you talk to them, they're not gonna correct things, so, you know, we see that at the code hearings.
So, are we comfortable, um, giving direction?
I'm good with a five-oh.
Yes, we can give direction to council to come up with a four-oh or
Four-one, one.
Five-oh, four-one, five-oh.
Mayor
I think I have a consensus.
Yes, you have a consensus, we can certainly bring back, um, an ordinance that will work with legal to develop something that we can bring back before you for consideration, uh, it may have an option for either one, uh, so
Yeah, I think that's how we can do it.
I think that's what we need to do, so, we'll bring, we'll work with the town attorney's office and bring something forward at the, either the next meeting or the meeting after.
Perfect, good, thank you, Russell.
Thank you for the time.
Good.
Yeah. Thank you all for coming out, I know this is an important topic, um, and I appreciate all the feedback, and the fact that you gave up an evening to be here to provide that feedback is very much appreciated. And, uh, so we will, we will go and work on that, um, ordinance, and, um, and, uh, take it from there, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Alright, um, we have a couple of
Minutes.
Meeting minutes to approve, um, special meeting on January 11th, and a regular meeting on January 25th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any additions, corrections to those minutes?
We're, we're doing both minutes, correct? Yes.
Seeing none, is there any, uh, is there anybody left in the public?
I guess the main event's over.
The Starkweather, Newell
Any public comment on the minutes, corrections, seeing none? Please call, no, please call.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kozinski?
Yes.
Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Minutes passed.